All right. Well, I'm gonna call the, uh, regular scheduled city council meeting in the city of Elgin to order on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020 at 7:01. We'll start with roll call. Um, let's keep it by Ward, uh, Ward 1. See, Pinson? Pinson, here?
Pinson here. It's my turn.
Uh-huh, we got you. Juan?
Todd is here.
Sue?
Brazier here.
Okay, Madam Secretary, oh, Cannon here. Madam Secretary, I certify that we have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that council members Ariaga, Jones, and Dennis, um, are absent. Uh, we've heard from all three, Forrest may be able to come, uh, come out later on in the, um, in the meeting if he's able. He's traveling, so he might be able to come in virtually. Um, do I, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, um, excuse council members, uh, Ariaga, Jones, and Dennis?
Second, Pinson.
Who, who was the motion? Is that Sue?
Brazier.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Brazier and a second by Councilmember Pinson?
Yes.
And now we'll call for a vote. Uh, Sue?
Brazier, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Pinson, yes.
Lopez, yes.
And that passes. You know, Sue, please let her, let the record reflect that said council members are excused. And then that'll put us to the invocation. Councilmember Lopez?
Lord, thank you for this time for letting us be here today. As we look at these issues, please grant us knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions, not only for our world, but for the whole city of Elgin. Lord, during these times, help us be patient with each other and help us, uh, be kind to one another during these times with COVID and other things going on at this time. We ask that you, uh, help us have a great meeting and we make great decisions today. In Jesus' name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
Go ahead and forego the pledge tonight just because of the craziness of everything. And then I'm gonna enter into, uh, the public hearing, recess the regular meeting at 7:05 and enter into the public hearing at the same time. Item number one, the public hearing. Public hearing on proposed fiscal year 20 through 21 annual budget and add valerum property tax rate for the city of Elgin. Does anybody here wish to speak on the, uh, uh, signed up or wish to speak on the public hearing for the, uh, the new tax rate? Okay. Is there anything to add by staff?
Um, no, mayor, not unless there's any questions or we, um, and can go through a little presentation, but that, I don't know if that's necessary.
Okay.
Whatever your preferences.
Okay. Um, then item number two in the public hearing, an ordinance on an ordinance amending Chapter 46, Article 4 Code of Ordinances, City of Elgin, Texas by amending Division 9, uh, I, General Industrial District and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances, resolutions. Staff have background on this?
Uh, just a little bit, mayor. This is, um, uh, this item, uh, is for, this item and the next item are both public hearings, kind of related to the same item. And then they're, they're both the action items on the agenda later this evening. They have to do with some cleanup that, uh, we're doing relative to, uh, city-owned property at our new business park, where's the, the home of, uh, the Seaton Elgin Medical Center and, and, uh, other developable property we have in that area. So as we've moved forward with the conversations with, uh, other entities about other projects, uh, we became aware of some, um, some issues that, some cleanup issues relative to, uh, certain uses and certain provisions that are in the code relative to General Industrial District. And then, uh, the second public hearing is as to an item to actually change some of the zoning out there, uh, to the same General Industrial District. And, uh, essentially what, what both of these action items are about is to, uh, position the city to, uh, consider a wider range of projects for our land out there that we realize that, um, as we've annexed property, uh, and as we purchased property out there, it came in under different zoning classifications. And we also have some outdated issues that are relative to that particular zoning that, um, that, uh, don't reflect, I think, the policy goals that the council and the EDC have for that land. So it's just basically cleaning up the code, but also rezoning the land to, uh, open it up to, um, to a broader range of possibilities for us out there. But it, it only, um, the, the rezoning will only affect, that's the next item, only affect our land. David, did you have anything else to add to that?
Okay.
I have nothing else to add.
All right. Does anybody here have signed up for that item? All right. We'll move on to the item number three, public hearing on an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Elgin, Texas, adopted in Chapter 46, Section 46 dash 3, revised code of ordinances, City of Elgin, Texas, 2013, and making this amendment a part of a said official zoning map to wit to rezone to I, General Industrial District, the property being approximately 66.22 acres in Elgin Business Park, Part 3, Block A, Lot 2, and the property being 14.73 acres out of the A59 Elizabeth Standifer survey, said tracks being more particularly described in Exhibits A through C, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Nothing to add on that item, I'm assuming?
Uh, no, mayor, just as I said, I think the important thing is on, on this particularly zoning change, it, it only affects property owned by the city.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, anybody signed up to, uh, be heard on that item? Okay. Then, uh, this council has no other questions. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay. Keep looking at y'all, even the cameras over there, sorry. All right. Then I will close the public hearing at 7:10 and we will enter back into the regular meeting at the same time. Moves us on to public comments. I believe we have one, um, one person signed up. Anybody else? Okay. Um, then Ms. Cheryl Reese, would you approach the, uh, um, the podium and give us your name and address for the record? We, we hold it to three minutes, but since there's not a big line, I'll give you some time, but get your piece.
Thank you. And my address is 136B Big Sandy Road, straight out Highway 95. Here, basically you have, uh, received my email, uh, concerning new holidays. So to bring it to your attention that, uh, Smithville has already incorporated Juneteenth as a city holiday, paid holiday for their employees, as well as Bastrop, looking at it to add it as one for theirs. But looking at those, at our community, you will see that it is vastly growing and it is very diverse. And so...
Chinese, mayor?
Mayor Cannon? Counsel would consider holidays.
One sec. Does somebody, does the council member have a question? Thought I heard somebody speak up.
Mayor Cannon?
Yes.
I'm losing, uh, some audio. Um, she just went cut out on me. I don't know if everybody else is or not.
Y'all cannot hear her?
Mary says?
Sue, I'm sorry. I cut out too. I couldn't hear anything. Couldn't hear you speak.
Y'all can't hear?
Yeah, I didn't either.
That's the only reason I stopped you, 'cause I thought, I suspected they couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I did not mean to interfere. I just, we couldn't hear.
Oh, that's okay. Can you hear me now?
Can y'all hear?
I felt like I was just on a commercial. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, uh...
And so basically, I'll go back and just say that I was requesting that we add Chinese New Year, Juneteenth, and Cinco de Mayo as paid days for city employees as, um, holidays, again, that we can celebrate here in Elgin. We are definitely, uh, a diverse community and it would be great to be able to include all of our community in, uh, various different holidays because, of course, we have a diverse staff. And so it would be great for us to be able to look at those holidays. I know that we may have to look at switching some out possibly. I don't know what the option would be, but I would just like for us to try to be inclusive with all of the, um, communities that we now have in Elgin, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just another note for the record, uh, public comment is just, is designed for citizens to comment. We can't get into dialect. I, I did interrupt you, but it was tech, because of a technical situation. But, uh, please just don't ever take us not responding as, uh, uh, not listening is, we just, uh, are not allowed to converse on things that aren't on the agenda. Okay. And that will move us to, and anybody else on public comment? I'm in a second. That'll take us to the city manager's report. Uh, item number one, update on the city of Elgin coronavirus pandemic response and impacts. Tom?
Mayor, this item is, uh, um, again, a routine review of our current status and, uh, we don't have a lot of news to report to council. We haven't had a lot of changes since our last meeting, but, uh, as always, wanted to give the council an opportunity to discuss any issue you might have in your mind this way. I think as, as everyone knows, we, uh, we extended, uh, where we've been, uh, our, our current kind of threat level four modified in our readiness plan to, now we've extended that to September 11th. So we'll continue, uh, existing operations, um, uh, with most all of our public, public buildings closed to the public and, and, uh, but we continue to operate, I think, effectively and, and providing the services that people are looking for. We continue to handle, see a lot of development interest and projects moving forward. Uh, it's a little more complicated. I think everybody's getting a little more used to the system. And so we're not really seeing any slowdown on, on the business side. And, uh, we continue to see residents be very supportive and understanding of the situation we're in. And we continue to be very pleased with the reaction we're getting from the business community as well. And that, uh, in Elgin, anyway, everybody's still, I think, the vast majority of people, I should say, not everybody, but the vast majority of people are still trying really hard to comply and still wanna conduct themselves in a safe manner. And, and, uh, we feel good about that from an operation standpoint. The one slight little blip we had that I wrote counsel about is we actually had to close our swimming pool a little earlier than planned. We, uh, had very limited use at the pool and, and, uh, but we're still seeing a nice response to that. A lot of people taking advantage of that, uh, for their families to utilize the pool. But we just ran into a situation last week where, uh, without any advance notice, uh, our lifeguard, a few of our lifeguards decided they were done working and wouldn't report to work. And so we simply don't have the staff now, qualified staff, to safely man the pool. So we didn't make it through Labor Day weekend like we thought we were going to and then, but we've closed that for the season. But, uh, we continue to look for ways to open up. Uh, on the rec side, the staff is, uh, is, is trying to think of different ways where we can make, uh, safely make the, the rec center a little more accessible, including our, our exercise room down there. So we'll hopefully see a few more little changes there. But, uh, but we continue to kind of be in the same mode we've been, I think, uh, countywide and, uh, area-wide for the last few weeks. So we'll, we'll review it all again in a, in a couple of weeks and see where we stand. So if anybody had any other questions or any information in for me about that.
Questions regarding COVID? Counsel?
Okay. All right. Uh, next item I wanted to discuss is, uh, moving forward with the adoption of our, our budget and, and property tax rate. As, as council knows, we are, we're kind of in the final stages of that. But one of our biggest challenges this year continues to be, uh, understanding, uh, getting clear, uh, clarification and, and moving forward with the adoption of our property tax rate and compliance with the new law that was implemented last year. Um, yeah, the hearing we had tonight, and actually that's a, uh, an ever-changing situation. So we had planned to come here tonight to talk about what, basically, we thought this was the last hurdle we had to clear by having this hearing. And we've, we've done that in compliance with the law. But, uh, but we're just hearing today and in our further research that, um, that the new law seems to infer that, uh, that, and, and we tried to get around this, but that, uh, we're required, the council is required to formally adopt the tax rate within seven days of the hearing you have on the tax rate, which I would make the argument that's indicative of, once again, of a law being created by people that don't know this business and how it works. Because, you know, fortunately, we're in a spot here where we don't seem to have a lot of big debate about, uh, the, about the budget or the tax rate. But, but for example, if we were to, if there were a, a decision made tonight as a result of this hearing, which is what we do, we have the hearing, we give an opportunity to hear from the public. And based on that input, the council may want to make changes in the budget, maybe want to, may want to make changes in the tax rate. But, uh, this new law gives council very little time to do that between, by only giving us seven days to formally adopt the tax rate before, uh, uh, within this hearing. So we thought we, and this is what the council discussed the last time, we thought we'd have an opportunity to give this opportunity to the people, uh, consider whatever input they might have, and then come back and, and still have a few weeks here to decide about the budget and the tax rate. But unfortunately, we don't have that. So, uh, we started out thinking we were gonna talk about tonight, can, do we need to have a meeting next week or not? Well, it turns out we do. So we have to have a meeting a week... So we have to have a meeting a week from tonight at a minimum, just to come in and adopt the tax rate. Now, we could do a work session at that time if there's more questions or discussion about the budget. The other side of that is, because we've adopted the tax rate, that's under the, what's it called now? No new tax rate. We're only required to have the one hearing. Traditionally, at least, I say traditionally, since I've been here, we've always gone the extra mile and had two different readings of the budget and two different readings on the tax rate ordinance, and two different public hearings on the budget and tax rate too, just to allow, that's way more than what we're required, but to be able to have multiple public meetings where citizens would have an opportunity to come in and comment on the budget. So given where we're at now, our charter doesn't require two readings of the appropriation ordinance, and we're only required now because of the tax rate to do one ordinance to approve that. So I'm trying to, if that's all making sense, if I hadn't lost here, we're trying to figure out the schedule from here to final adoption of the budget. I guess I'm saying if we, unless there's, I guess the other part to factor into that is, we talked about the last time, I think the staff has presented everything they have on the budget and every, basically, everything from our standpoint that we think that the council needs to hear from us. So if we did have a work session, we'd need some feedback from council about exactly what you'd want to talk about or what other information you're looking for. So I would just say, if it's a case where you've had all your questions answered and there aren't any big issues to discuss, we'd have this meeting next week, we'd get the budget adoption out of, or the tax rate, excuse me, adoption done, come back to our regular meeting on the 15th, and we could adopt the budget then. We could still have another hearing then, give an opportunity for people to weigh in on it. But in the schedule that we started out with at the beginning of the year, we thought we were going to have another meeting, a called meeting on the 22nd. If we want to do that, then we can comply with the rules and the law in our charter and not have to have the meeting at the end of the month. But, so I think we can slot in the legislative action that we need to take. It just depends on when council wants to meet or how much more we need to meet to talk about the budget. So I guess I'm just looking for a little feedback on that.
Next week is unavoidable. We could have a work session at that point, right?
Right. I guess maybe that's a step, if we just have the meeting next week, we could position the agenda so we could still have a work session or discussion to accompany that. And then I guess if we got everything done then, then we could finalize everything on the 15th. But it, I guess, I just felt like we like to get to the end, to have October 1st come around and be able to say we had double the hearings we were required to have and had double the action on the agenda for the council we were required to have to give multiple opportunities for people to have input. But frankly, we're not receiving a lot of input from people, I guess, so maybe that's not quite as important.
We met at our meeting, we talked a little bit about if we had an option for a additional meeting, it was probably better to do it sooner rather than later, to give us enough time to talk about anything that might need to change in the budget rather than later on in the month. So I mean, I'm all for it next week.
Okay. Counsel, any feedback? Anybody disagree or will that work?
It'll work.
All right, well, thanks.
Good enough feedback.
I guess I talked long enough, I kind of got it to myself.
Charles got something.
I didn't. Go ahead.
There are a couple of issues. One is that they're kind of still hanging out. There is that it's kind of unclear whether or not you have to approve the budget before you approve the tax rate, and we've got our attorneys working on that, and they're supposed to get back to me as soon as they can about that. Their original, their initial feeling was that we didn't have to do that, they can't find anything in the local government code that requires you to do that, so I'm not sure that that's a problem. But if we, if you intend to adopt the tax rate on the 8th, you're going to have to vote on the time, place, and that date. So we have to, yeah, there has to be a motion that setting the date that you're going to adopt the tax rate, which would be September 8th. So that would simply be the motion. And that'll be at 6:00 or 7:00 in this location on the 8th of September, so.
And we need to do that tonight? Okay. So we don't really have another opportunity on the agenda, so we need to do that now? Okay, so help me out with that language. Needs to be a motion to set.
The date for adopting the tax rate.
Tax rate?
For the 20, 21-year budget.
Who's got a calendar? What will that date be?
On September 8th, Tuesday, September the 8th, at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, whatever is your pleasure.
Seven.
In this location.
At this location?
It's 404 North Main Street, Elgin Public Library Annex.
Does anybody have any questions?
To say all that in the motion? Well, as you can tell, as I said, we're, the problem is, we're not, it seems like everybody we call, we get a different answer from, so it's really a frustrating thing.
The ramifications of not doing it, there's no ramifications for just doing it, right?
Well, the only problem is that if you don't follow the sequence of events, somebody could file an injunction to prevent us from.
But doing it doesn't hurt anything, whether we have to or not, right? All right. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to set September 8th at 7:00 PM at 404 North Main Street in Elgin, Texas, that we will set the, have an agenda item to set the tax rate for the 2020, 2021 annual budget year. Fiscal year.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Lopez, and a second by Councilmember Vega. I'll move kind of quick on that without any feedback. Are there questions from the council? Y'all understand what we're doing, why we might have to do that? Okay. All right, hearing none other questions, I will call a vote.
Yes.
Sue? Is Sue being really still, or is she fro, okay?
Y'all volume is low. We can't hear.
It's your vote.
I'm hearing the third word.
Do you need me to vote? Fraser, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Thank you for hanging in there. You're so still, Sue, I couldn't tell if you were frozen or just being really still.
No, I was trying to listen really, really intently, because we really couldn't hear real, real well.
Try to speak up. Okay. That necessary vote. Okay, item three, departmental reports.
Excuse me, mayor, unless there's any questions, counsel, I guess that's the rest of my report. You have the department reports. I would mention that we, since our last meeting, a couple of really nice events in town with the Circle Brewing Groundbreaking, which is a great event, and something that we were able to do in spite of, and achieve social distancing, and had a really nice event out there, and likewise, had a nice event commemorating and discussing our new baseball, Elgin Baseball Memorabilia Collection that we have at the rec center now on display. And both events were, had a nice, nice crowd for both events that we were able to handle in a safe way, but just examples of how we're moving forward with projects, positive steps forward, I think, and appreciate council members and the mayor supporting us on those events. But unless anybody had any other questions for me, that's all I have for my report tonight, mayor.
Okay, no general report. All right.
Hello, mom, that's us.
Questions? Questions for the staff?
Mom, did you need a coffee?
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to new business. Item number one, a resolution, the City of Elgin, Texas authorizing the award of an engineering service, provider contract for providing planning, engineering, surveying, geotechnical bidding, and construction supervision services relative to the County Line Road Reconstruction and Improvement Phase One project.
Thank you, mayor. This item is an engagement of TRC for, and support services relative to another grant application that we're going to make that we think we might be able to secure outside funds, or at least we're going to take a shot at it for a county line road reconstruction project, and similar to what we've done probably the last couple of meetings, we need some preliminary engineering support work, support to submit a qualifying application. So this is an engagement of TRC to help us out initially with that grant application.
Questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
So move, Benson.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Benson, and a second by Councilmember Lopez. No other questions? We'll call for vote, Mary.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Yes.
Fraser, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Uh, mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Cannon, can we get y'all's volume up some? Because we really can't hear y'all.
Okay. Better?
We can hear you the most, but we really can't hear Jessica and Daniel.
And Daniel. And Tom.
Thank you for being patient. Okay, item number two. Item number two, consider adopt, considering or adopt a citizens' participation plan for the Texas General Land Office mitigation state competition for 2015, 2016, and Hurricane Harvey, just those two years?
Oh, well, three different ones, yeah.
Just make sure it wasn't supposed to be another year there. Hurricane Harvey Grants, GLO MIT, otherwise known as GLO MIT. Staff?
Thank you, mayor. This is also another item that's part of a grant application. If you recall, we've actually done a couple of these. I think two meetings ago, adopted a different citizens' participation plan, but because this is a different type of grant that we're applying for, we have to, council has to adopt a separate type of participation plan, but it's a practical matter, it's the same thing.
Question, counsel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the plan as presented.
So moved.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Vega, and a second by Councilmember Lopez. Any other questions? I'll call for a vote. Vega?
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Benson, yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Amendment in Chapter 46, Article 4, Code of Ordinances, City of Elgin, Texas, amending Division 9, otherwise I, General Industrial District, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, mayor. This is the item that we had a public hearing on earlier tonight. It's a cleanup measure to address some issues that we've identified in this particular zoning category, I, the General Industrial District. This proposal was reviewed by the Planning Commission and has been unanimously recommended for adoption.
Questions, counsel? And I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So move, Fraser.
Second, Lopez.
Got a motion by Councilmember Fraser, and a second by Lopez. Any other questions? Sue?
Fraser, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Sure. Brief recess, or do you, a mic check?
Mike, can we, we really only have the one item left. Before we go to executive session, you could work on it down.
Limp through it, okay. Item four.
Right.
Item number four, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Elgin, Texas, adopted in Chapter 46, Section 46-3, Revised Code of Ordinances, City of Elgin, Texas, 2013, and making this amendment a part of said official zoning map to rezone to I, General Industrial District, the property being approximately 66.22 acres in Elgin Business Park, Part 3, Block A, Lot 2, and the property being 14.73 acres. Out of the A59 Elizabeth Standard for Survey, said tract's being more particularly described in Exhibits A through C, and providing for a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions. Any other questions on this? I think the big reiteration for me is that it's all city-owned property, it's in-house.
That's right. This is our kind of concept plan before Seaton came. If you recall, the property we're looking at, and this is probably a better example of what we're trying to address. We, for whatever reason, different chunks of the property out here, we're zoned C3 commercial, and that limits our, and then we have the residential part, which obviously limits our ability to consider bigger job creators and more industrial-like uses out there. So all we're trying to do is rezone this property to open up the possibilities for us. And this is an item that's, this change is, was. Not only recommended by the Planning Commission, but is supported by the EDC as well.
Are you showing us the slide?
Yes.
It's been.
Oh.
Okay.
That's what y'all been looking at the whole time?
No, I've been looking at it.
I had some good slides on there you missed. Okay, I didn't know that.
We like those type presentations.
Okay, sorry. Well, this, the map I've got, the great map I have on the screen is in your packet, but it kind of illustrates the parts we're changing.
Seaton property and EDC property. All right, any questions on that? Second item on the public hearing. All right, then I will approve a motion to, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Lopez?
Second, Vega.
And a second by Councilmember Vega. And I will call for a vote. Daniel?
Lopez, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item number five, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Elgin, Texas, approving an economic development agreement between the City of Elgin an economic development agreement between the City of Elgin and Economic Development Corporation and Yuriko Manufacturing Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to approve the agreement. Tom?
Item, I want to go into executive session four before we, and we'll come back to it.
So we'll discuss, we'll discuss this in, in executive session item. And then when we come out, we'll make, we'll potentially make a vote on this resolution. Correct?
That's correct.
So we need to skip to announcements, if any, and then we'll, we'll go into executive? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any announcement, staff?
I, I don't know. I saw Amy came on there before. I don't know if she has any.
Amy?
Yeah. If I could, y'all.
You can.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. The census, we're in the final weeks of being able to encourage people to participate in completing the census. And it'd be greatly helpful if you can post on your Facebook pages about it or if you can reach out to organizations in the community and encourage them to help spread the word. We, we're still just at 60%. And the better count we get, the more financial support we'll ultimately have on grant funding and so on in the future and representation and so on.
Thank you, Amy. Any other announcements? Yes? Counsel? Okay. All right. Then I will recess the regular meeting at 7:42 PM. And we will reconvene in five minutes, or we'll go into executive session in five minutes. So I recess us at 7:42. Thank you very much, staff. And Ms. Reese? Yes?